Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock. We will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staff and students at Marquette High School for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. Thank you also to the ambassadors who are here from our schools to assist with greeting and signing in our guests. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. Calling out verbal aggressiveness, inappropriate language, or name-calling is not acceptable. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board may take a recess until such time the audience is appropriate. If inappropriate behavior continues by individuals, they may be asked to leave the meeting. If the audience becomes so inappropriate in their behavior that we can't conduct our business, the board reserves the right to adjourn the meeting. This Board of Education meeting is livestreamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. U2 preserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate and misleading content. That process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. We want everyone to have the ability to see and have the ability to hear the business of the district, reports presented, and the comments of everyone who is here to speak. If, I'm sorry, we request that all individuals speak slowly and clearly. If you have a sign, we ask that you keep it down low so you are not obstructing the views of others. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for August 18, 2022?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes. And next, we have our first Patron Comments section. I'm going to read an introduction before we get started. During Patron Comments, Rockwood patrons may address the Board of Education concerning issues related to the school district. Under our updated policy, there are now two Patron Comments sections during regular Board meetings. The first public comment period shall be solely for Patron Comments related to items on tonight's agenda, which will be limited to 30 minutes. The second public comment period shall occur at the end of the meeting order of business and shall be for patrons to make a statement or address the Board concerning any issues pertaining to the Rockwood School District. Please know that patrons also have the opportunity to submit comments in writing to the Board at any time. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Combining time or giving your time to someone else to speak is not allowed. Only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time. The Board uses the public comment periods as an opportunity to listen and receive information, but Board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those speaking other than to seek clarification of their comments. A Board member may ask that the superintendent ensure that the appropriate staff member follows up in a timely fashion with the individual regarding the information, question, or concern presented during Patron Comments. We have a stand with microphones ready, so both the Board and the audience may hear the Patron Comments clearly. I would like to remind everyone that comments about individual employees and/or students will not be permitted in public session. We also expect that you will remain civil and respectful in your remarks, and if anyone becomes disruptive, we reserve the right to cut your three minutes short. Verbally aggressive language and vulgarity in any form is not acceptable. Whether you are reading someone else's remarks or they are your own, it will not be tolerated. The Board appreciates that you have taken the time to come this evening, and we value both your input and your perspective. For your convenience, our three-minute time clock is ready. The first patron to speak is Eric Smith.
My name is Eric Smith, and I am here as a parent of multiple students in both the Rockwood and Special School Districts and as an individual at the center of a controversy playing out within the public and political environment of St. Louis. We have a constitutionally guaranteed freedom of speech that is envied around the world, but that freedom does not come without responsibility. Recent comments disparaging attendees to this Board's meeting who bring their children in wheelchairs and show support for marginalized people within the community directly implicate my family as the target of these statements. A quick review of the livestream archives proves this beyond a reasonable doubt. Now, some people claim the speaker didn't mean it, although the speaker says, "I mean it, and I stand by it." Some people claim the speaker was not disparaging my children in wheelchairs, but was commenting on my wife and I. As can be seen by the public's reaction, the speaker's words and actions were significantly broad enough to disparage both my wife and I and our children. Some people have taken the speaker's word "libtard" and tried to normalize it, claiming it has nothing to do with stupidity, mental deficiency, or disability, but defined it using the terms retard and naive, which do indicate stupidity, mental deficiency, and disability. Some people have even claimed meeting attendees tripped over my daughter's medical equipment, as if that makes it okay to claim she, as a student of this district, neither belongs here nor has a right to be here with the able-bodied, non-wheelchair-using crowd. Now, these tactics are used by many groups and organizations to insult and threaten people they identify as others, and our well-established tactics use to separate them from us, be they conservative or liberal, wealthy or in need, be they college-educated or not. Now, I want you to think carefully about what I just said. Comments have been made and language and behavior used to insult a group of people, namely my family, and by proxy, the larger LGBTQIA+ and differently-abled communities. Comments have been made and language and behavior used, which imply one or more people are worth less than the speaker due to beliefs, physical capabilities, and the efforts and actions they must undertake to participate in society. Webster's Dictionary defines bully as "to use language or behavior that is cruel, insulting, threatening, and aggressive." In your own Student Discipline and Consequences handbook considers bullying such as egregious behavior that it carries penalties up to and including expulsion from school. Now, tonight, you are in a unique position to help remedy this situation by example and provide that example to your school administrators, faculty, students, and to the community at large through Agenda Item 7.07, Changes to Your Code of Ethics. These changes explicitly enshrine in your policy and through that policy direct and teach the proper way to respect others through speech and actions. I please ask that you see the community shows this as an emergency circumstance and exercise the provisions of your policy for policy adoption and approve and adopt these policy changes during tonight's first consideration. Thank you.
The second speaker is Adrian Smith.
I am Jane Leahy Smith's daughter. I would like to take a moment of silence for people to think about every person you know that fits into one of the groups disparaged from one of the Board members' deplorable This reflects poorly on our district. I want anyone in a group that has been bullied or dehumanized this week to stand up. Take a look. These are your classmates, students, people of the community, and neighbors. We want to build a longer table, not a higher fence. We need to be able to talk and communicate with each other and behave respectfully to everyone. If it takes going back to kindergarten where we are taught how to behave and respect others, so be it. I was a part of the 2022 class, and my family represents people from 2023, 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2029. Why does it take making fun of my brothers and sisters and horrible comments for people to look at them and be like, "That's not correct"? Why does it take this now, and why can't we, why didn't we do this in the future? We need to look, and we need to have a better community for the district and everyone else to be able to move forward into the community and for life continuing on. Thank you.
The next speaker is Danielle Mirt.
Hello. My name is Danielle Mirt. I use she/her or they/them pronouns. I am a Rockwood resident and a parent of a current student in the district. I'm here tonight to thank the Board for many things, including Agenda Item 7.07 regarding Policy 0340, updating the Board's Code of Ethics policy, to ensure, quote, "all members are held to the highest professional standard." Like many stakeholders, I am curious to learn how the Board will enforce violations of this Code of Ethics if and when they occur. I'm also here to thank the Board for all it is doing to, to keep our community safe. I reviewed the safety update presentation and was pleased to see social and emotional security of our community included in the presentation. I also want to say thank you to all of our social, emotional, safety personnel, including our school counselors, therapists, social workers, social-emotional behavioral specialists, nurses, and student behavioral team specialists. By investing in programs like Pathways Wellness Center, Hazel Heart Teletherapy, Thrive Training, and many other programs, you are ensuring all students have a trusted adult championing them and preparing all of our students for a successful future. Thank you. I also want to say thank you to all of the students, parents, and community members at large who continue to show up with kindness in their hearts and open mind for setting a good example of how to be a decent human and affirming everyone regardless of their I challenge the entire Rockwood community to love louder, because remember, our children are watching. Thank you.
I am a Rockwood parent and a Rockwood resident, and as the school year started, I would just like to thank all the teachers and librarians who might not be here but might be watching online tonight for the start of a great year. I would wish that was all I had to talk about, but I think by now we're all aware of some of the hateful and obscene and embarrassing comments made during a live appearance by a member of this Board of Education last week. During her remarks, she made a number of statements that are unbecoming of a school board member. She stated that transgender quote-unquote crap needed to be eliminated from our schools. She doubled down on her earlier comments, calling her, excuse me, labeling her opponents as libtards, even going so far as to mock and target children in wheelchairs and their parents. The Rockwood School District is home to hundreds of disabled students and parents, as well as transgender youth and adults. Any teacher, administrator, or school employee using this kind of derogatory language would be disciplined immediately. Yet she has a seat on the Board where she can allow her hatefulness and bigotry to shape policies that will negatively impact those children she so clearly despises. Enough is enough. It's high time that the rest of this Board takes an official stand against these attacks she frequently makes against the people she was elected to serve. If she had any sense of decency, she would apologize publicly and resign in disgrace. However, this weekend, she spent some time continuing her transphobic attacks against students on her podcast. It's clear that she lacks the tiniest shred of dignity. She's not interested in holding herself accountable for the pain she has caused. The Board must take immediate and decisive action. I'm glad to see that's on the agenda tonight. This member must be censured. If Board policies are not sufficient to do so, they must be updated. Refusal to act swiftly says to all the vulnerable student populations of this district that they will not be protected by you as the Board. Thank you.
The next speaker is Zach Winslow.
As a parent of two in the district, thank you for this chance to speak. Regarding Agenda Item 8.01, the school's safety plan, which includes personnel for social, emotional safety, I'd like to address the lone no vote last month against extending the contracts for trauma-informed teacher training, counseling, and therapy for students, and the optional gender-based best practices training for teachers. I've often heard things like, "School should only be about learning core subjects that'll help in the real world." I'd like to propose an alternative view. School is where we spend the majority of our formative years. In addition to being the place where we learn core subjects, it's where we learn how to treat each other and build relationships with peers and authority figures. We learn how to address conflict, whether that's in a healthy or unhealthy way. Our minds and bodies change over those years, and it's where we discover who we are. To deny that schools do and can and should address these issues is to deny our humanity. Our kids are not academic robots. As kids grow up, they absorb what they experience, and school is only one of many sources. A parent's most important job is to ensure their kid's health and safety, including mental health. It's our job to do our very best to help them become better than us and the best versions of themselves. Kids also absorb from their friends, the internet, TV and movies, travel, video games, art, and from driving down I-70 and seeing billboards for Jesus next to billboards for adult stores. They learn the fear of death when playing in the pool and being held underwater for half a second too long. They learn from the death of a pet and from the death of a family member. They learn from the empty seat in their classroom after a weekend car accident. They hear about kids gunned down at other schools, and they learn from active shooter drills. Some kids just feel different, and they don't know why. Some kids are abused by the people they trust. Some kids attempt suicide, and some succeed. This is our reality, and it's not optional. All this raw data is hard for a kid to process. They need trusted adults to help them understand. As a parent, I always want to be the one my child can come to for help and advice and to help them understand things that they can't understand. But I know a time might come when I can't be there, and it truly takes a village. I trust our teachers to be there for our kids and to do the very best for them. As mandatory reporters, whenever they hear about instances of abuse or self-harm or trauma, it's their job to take action. It's a heavy burden, and they carry it willingly and often thanklessly. Our teachers see and feel things that those of us who are not teachers cannot understand, but we can listen. The teachers I've listened to are saying they're tired, and they need resources, and they need support. Our librarians need to be able to do their jobs without being afraid of being called pedophiles or groomers, when in reality, they're the ones there for our kids when the evil in this world comes after them. Support our kids by supporting our teachers and by giving them the resources they need to help our kids navigate the world around them. It's not just about test scores, it's about having kids who aren't crushed by the weight of the world around them. When we help them with life, the test scores will follow, I promise you. Stop going after our teachers to push personal political agendas. Stop making their jobs and lives harder than they already are. Our teachers are not indoctrinated, as some here claim. They're educated for years solely to serve our kids, and they're doing more good in our community than self-serving wannabe pundits could ever hope to. Our district and communities are so much better.
The next speaker is Kelly Grossman.
My name is Kelly Grossman. I'm a Rockwood parent. I'd like to address you tonight with some concerns related to the report on school safety and security. I've read the report, and I'm thankful for a superintendent and a school district that embrace a comprehensive system that impacts and reflects the needs for both physical and social and emotional safety. One of Rockwood's core values is to build a relationship with every student and every family, and a stated goal is for every student to have a Rockwood champion focused on helping them grow and thrive in the world. It is imperative, and should go without saying, that the directors of the Board of Education should not be working at cross purposes to the district's values and goals. One of our Board members has recently made comments mocking and belittling several groups of parents, students, and staff. How are LGBTQ students, transgender students, Special School District students and their families supposed to feel safe when there is a Board member using them for a laugh and a speech? Since 2018, Rockwood Middle Schools have had anti-bullying ambassadors. They work to spread the word that bullying is not tolerated in our schools. How can we ask middle school students to do something that we're not asking the adults in our district to do? Character education programs in every Rockwood school advocate for integrity, honesty, and respect. This should be true at every level of the district, from the students, to the teaching staff, to the support staff, to the administration, all the way up to and including the Board of Education. Rockwood has codes of conduct for students, staff, and administrators. We need a more robust code of conduct for Board members. I know that you are working on this issue, and I encourage you to take further action to ensure your code of conduct reflects the standards to which the rest of Rockwood is held. The Board of Education should lead the way in behavior and messaging. They should not be the exceptions to our values and expectations. There should be consequences for failing to act in accordance with the honor and integrity that this district preserves. Thank you.
The next speaker is Phil Milligan.
Dr. Kane, members of the Board and the Rockwood Administration, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I would also like to welcome Dr. Kane to Rockwood. In my 39 years in education, I don't know that I've heard as many positive comments made in the first two months of a superintendent's tenure. I've been a Rockwood taxpayer for 33 years. We came to Rockwood in 1989, my wife and I, with a one-year-old, to teach in Rockwood. My wife then spent the rest of her career here. I taught 11 years at Lafayette High School before becoming a principal in the Francis Howe and Melville School Districts, where I worked extensively with students with special needs. Our then-one-year-old is now an administrator with SSD, working in Rockwood. Her younger sister is an SSD teacher, also in Rockwood. Both are K-12 Rockwood graduates. To say the least, I love Rockwood. The Rockwood School District has been very good to my family and to me. I am proud of my district. But tonight, I have a problem. I have a problem that we have an elected official who called any efforts to help students understand their transgender classmates, she called that crap. I have a problem that she used the word "libtard" in a public forum. This word has gained popularity in the last five to six years and is clearly derived from a word which is nothing but derogatory and hateful to people with disabilities. I had planned to say that R-word that I was alluding to, but I can't bring myself to say it. The taste is just too bitter in my mouth. As if that were not enough, she made it clear that she was indeed referring to people with disabilities, specifically referring to coming in in wheelchairs and saying, "You are a libtard. I mean it. I stand by it." The children are listening, those with disabilities, those with friends with disabilities, those still learning how to treat those who are different from themselves. I believe in the First Amendment. Yes, you have a right to free speech, but just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. Another word, another word that some people use for people with disabilities is handicapped. While not hateful, like the R-word I alluded to above, it is inaccurate. Some people are born with disabilities. To what extent they are handicapped depends on how we, as a society, respond to them. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ben Murray.
My name is Ben Murray. I use he/him pronouns, and I graduated from Eureka High School in 1993 and currently have two wonderful students in Rockwood. I know most Board members and Rockwood stakeholders here tonight are just as horrified as I am at the very recent discriminatory hate speech. Failure to ensure full accountability is not an option. I should be attending my oldest kid's school open house tonight to meet their teachers and get to know their curriculum, but instead, I need to be here due to lack of any accountability the last time the Board listened to the community comments for over an hour on May 19 of this year. That was due to previous comments by the same individual that were very similar to those in the recent video. If no strong and successful effort for accountability for Board members is enacted and followed, the hateful comments by one individual will further tarnish the reputation of every person in this room and in this school district. Lack of accountability provides implicit approval for this behavior in the future, despite going against everything Rockwood stands for. And in the eyes of many people, both in Rockwood and across the country, a lack of accountability has already significantly damaged Rockwood's great reputation. And whether the people being attacked by this rhetoric are in the LGBTQ+ community in wheelchairs, or like myself, who have multiple invisibilities that are more invisible, that you cannot see just by looking at me, this hate speech only serves to tell people like myself, Rockwood staff, Rockwood students, and other members of the community that our very existence is not seen as fully human. At every employer I've had, if I had made a single comment, like the many things that have been said, I would have been fired on the spot and escorted from the building by security immediately. If I was in an event at my own time while either wearing a shirt with my employer's logo or mentioning my employer before similar comments, I would also be fired, and rightfully so. This rhetoric is something that hurts the entire community, including the teachers, staff, parents, and especially the very students Rockwood is here to serve. And it also drives away even more amazing teachers, counselors, and other staff from Rockwood at a time all of our children need them the most, and further drives a wedge into a community that is already trying to heal after a very difficult time for everyone. So please take the necessary ethical and moral actions to ensure Board member accountability to protect the very students who Rockwood has already resolved to protect, as stated in many Rockwood materials, including the Rockwood School District Educational Equity Resolution passed in July of 2020. Thank you, and remember to love louder.
The next speaker tonight is Ada Murray.
Hello, everybody. The last time I made a comment, it was about adults bullying kids. Unfortunately, that problem is still not fixed. Recently, I saw someone mocking kids who are part of the LGBTQ+ community and mocking kids who have disabilities. When I watched that video, I was both mad and sad. I don't understand how someone can say those things, especially someone who has a job to help children and do anything to make sure kids learn and feel like they belong. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. I come to you tonight as a graduate from the Rockwood School District and a current parent here within the district as well. Tonight, I'd like to use my time to read a letter that I received from a teacher within the district. Good evening. I have plenty of opinions about what was shared across the media recently. However, my message tonight is for the students and families of Rockwood. While you may not get an apology from the source, you will get one from this Rockwood teacher. I am sorry. I'm sorry that you and your children have to question whether or not you are valued, whether or not you are worthy and wanted. I'm sorry that you lost sleep because your head couldn't stop spinning over another person making you feel like less instead of more and then being angry that you let that person in your head. I'm sorry you can't watch the news or scroll through your phone without being reminded that there are people who would rather tear others down instead of building them up. Instead, I want you to know that you are welcome here. You are wanted, you are valued, you are important, each and every one. Without needing an explanation, without justification for being who you are, without judgment for being you, you are worthy of respect, love, dignity, and the opportunity to learn in a safe environment that celebrates and supports diversity in any and all forms. This is the Rockwood I've been proud to work for and raise my own children in for many years. This is the Rockwood I miss. This is the Rockwood your teachers strive to be. Thank you.
The next speaker is Courtney Sermaj.
Good evening, members of the board. I have tried multiple times over the past few days to come up with three minutes of what to say tonight. So I'm just going to share my experience. I moved here, back here, growing up here, I moved back in 2019 because my oldest son has a disability and I believed that I was bringing him to one of the best districts that could care for him. As I laid my son down to sleep on Thursday night, being a disability advocate, my phone began to blow up with recent events from one of the board members. I had to look at my sleeping child and know that I put him here. Do not make me a liar. I brought my son here for the best. I believe Rockwood can be the best, but we have got to stand up to the bullies. No one is above the laws. And actually, I have been seeking as a disability advocate, what can I actually do to make sure this can never, ever happen again at any school? And so I am working with an attorney to make those changes with the U.S. Department of Education. I ask that the member who has said these things, please take a step back, please resign. Please publicly apologize to every one of our children who you are supposed to represent. And if you can't do that, then I ask the rest of you to find in your life the time to continue to come back here and to organize because we will not let this go, we stand
I'll be speaking tonight related to Agenda Item 7.07 in the Code of Ethics Policy Modifications. I first want to say that the lies and misinformation, the things taken out of context around the board member comments are appalling. I think maybe the first and second speaker actually watched and understood the comments and that they were political. I urge all board members to truly consider the ramifications of your actions to silence and intimidate those with different perspectives. This district has a recent history of changing policy to suit a specific agenda and silence constituents. When parents challenged books with pornography, the Board of Education changed the Challenge Committee policy. The president and the Board of Education, the superintendent posted a tip line to ensure that liberal activists could report parents who spoke out. This most recent proposed change to the Ethics Code is just the latest attempt to silence dissenting voices. That's so kind. We do not want MSBA, DESI, NEA conformity in our schools. I see signs in this room that say "Teach Tolerance." There are people who are laughing at me, at my perspective. Yet, I heard someone who ran for the BOE and lost making fun of the Urban Dictionary as I sat in front of them tonight. There is nothing unethical about a strong black conservative woman voicing her distaste for parents who use their children for the purpose of political grandstanding. Love louder, be kinder, but only if that applies to your political affiliation. A parent who spoke just prior to this was using lies to promote this false narrative. I urge you all, I urge you all to carefully consider the vague language that you're recommending change to the Code of Ethics.
That concludes our first section of patron comments for this evening. We will get to the second section shortly. Next, we have superintendent and board comments. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Kane.
Good evening, all. Students at the Rockwood Center for Creative Learning, CCL, put into action over the summer harvesting crops they planted during the school year to donate to the Circle of Concern Food Pantry. During the spring semester, CCL third graders completed the Plant a Nation Unit with teachers Kathy Davis, during which they learned about different types of plants and how to care for them and decided which plants to grow. Over the summer, Kathy set up dates for students to come to the CCL and harvest, sorry, excuse me, harvest the produce that they planted. She then took the produce to the Circle of Concern, a food pantry that helps feed more than 600 families each month for distribution. Kathy, thank you to both you and your students for showing ingenuity and community spirit in order to help out families in need. Rockwood seniors Evan Canis and Sadarth Vas Kamala have been named to the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis Student Board of Directors for the 2022-2023 school year. Evan from Marquette High School and Sadarth from Lafayette are among 18 high school seniors from the metro area that have been selected to serve on the board. Students are chosen through a competitive application process that includes an essay and letters of recommendation. Those selected to meet monthly gain a thorough understanding of the Federal Reserve Bank role and the role in the U.S. economy and learn about its unique partnerships with banks, businesses, and the community. Congratulations to these students, I cannot read this evening, I apologize. Congratulations to these two students for this achievement. The Rockwood School District Facilities Department completed just under $3 million worth of summer projects around the district funded through the bond issue that was passed by Rockwood voters in 2017. The main summer projects included track resurfacing at all four of our high schools, a renovation of the front parking lot of Babler Elementary, and a replacement of the tennis courts at Lafayette High School. We are fortunate to benefit from the efficient and effective management of our construction projects, thanks to our facilities team, and I'd like to commend them for all the work that they do and have done to keep our buildings safe and welcoming places for our community It has been a great first two weeks of school here in the Rockwood School District. I want to thank our students, our staff members, families, and community members for helping us get off to such a great start as we all strive to make this year safe, focused, and fun. I have had the pleasure of getting around to most of our schools these past 11 days and the absolute enthusiasm I have witnessed is truly heartening. You can visit our district webpage, rsdmo.org, or check out our social media pages for some images from the first day of school. Let's take a look at some of the video highlights in terms of sights and sound from the first
I'm at Green Pines Elementary School for the first day of school and as you can tell by the noise and the joy and the fun that you can hear behind me, we're having a fantastic start to the school year. So I thank all the parents, all staff, all stakeholders, and all students for a great start. It's going to be an outstanding school year.
So I'd like to finish my comments for the evening with where it all starts in this district. I've actually, in my time in this district, now two months, tried to figure out how far back does this particular mission statement go? I've asked a number of individuals, variety of roles, how far back does this particular mission statement go? And I haven't come up with a definitive answer in terms of how far back it goes. But I want everyone in this room and everyone that's watching on video, regardless of lean ideology and beliefs, to understand one thing. This mission statement is evergreen and it is not changing. And I want you to see what is in blue on the screen. Whatever, all students and potential, regardless of your belief, perspective, or opinion, we are here to work with all of the 20,000, approximately 20,000 students in the Rockwood School District. That is the reason 4,000 staff members, including the superintendent, show up every single day to serve and meet the needs of all students in this district. That is what we are doing, what the district has done, and what it is that we will be doing as we continue to move forward. I encourage anyone that is in support of that mission, that longstanding, in many ways, a political mission, I encourage you and welcome you to come join what we are doing as a district. Because this is the reason that we show up. You're going to hear me say many things over the years. One of them will be this, the classroom is the reason that we have a school district. And we're going to support each and every learner in the classroom spaces in the Rockwood School District. And I just wanted to say that before we transition over.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. I would like to follow that up by reading a statement that begins with exactly what you just said. "The mission of the Rockwood School District, as approved by the Board of Education, is to do whatever it takes to ensure all students realize their potential. The core values of the district, as approved by the Rockwood Board of Education, include finding joy in our work and believing in kindness and mutual respect for all, being guided by strong character, ethics, and integrity, making our schools warm, welcoming places where children, staff, and families thrive, and honoring differences as we provide equal access for all learners. It is the policy of the Rockwood Board of Education to maintain a learning environment that is free from harassment because of an individual's race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, perceived sexual orientation, or gender identity. It is a violation of Board Policy 2130 for any student, teacher, administrator, or other school personnel, including members of the Board of Education, to harass or unlawfully discriminate against a student regarding the individual's race, color, religion, national origin, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, perceived sexual orientation, or gender identity." identity. Board Policy 0340 sets forth the Rockwood Board's Code of Ethics and provides, among other things, that members of the Board of Education will support the Board once a legal decision has been made by a majority vote. Avoid inappropriate or disparaging remarks in or out of Board meetings about other Board members or their opinions, and avoid any comments which may be interpreted as undermining the administration of the district. On August 10, the Board of Education, including Director Clark, participated in a workshop where we discussed, among other things, the impact that the Board's actions have on the district's annual performance report, and how important it is that we work together as a team to further the district's mission and vision to ensure all students realize their potential. On August 23, 2022, Ms. Jessica Laurent-Clark, a Board of Education member, spoke in a meeting not affiliated or sponsored by the district where she identified herself as a newly-elected Board member. At this speaking engagement, she made disparaging comments about transgender individuals, the LGBTQ+ community, and individuals with disabilities. The statements of Ms. Clark are inconsistent with the vision, mission, and core values of the district and Board of Education policies. In addition, they are inconsistent with our educational equity resolution. Given her position as a Board of Education member and the identification of herself as a Board member, the media coverage and sharing of Ms. Clark's statements have brought unwanted and negative public attention to the district, including our students, families, staff, and administration. The district has more than 20,000 students who rely on us to set an example of civility and inclusion. We also have more than 4,000 employees who rely on us as well. These educators and support staff are committed to providing a safe and healthy learning environment for all students. Ms. Clark's comments have not only adversely impacted her effectiveness as a Board of Education member, they have undermined the orderly governance of the district, staff morale, and the reputation of the district among its parent and student community. The Rockwood Board of Education does not tolerate or condone hurtful and offensive language regarding disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, or perceived sexual orientation, and the Rockwood Board of Education reaffirms its commitment to creating an environment free of harassment or discrimination."
President Hayes, I'd like to make a motion that we affirm that as a board. Your comments?
Second.
So motion and a second to reaffirm the statement by the board.
Correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Oppose.
Can we make other statements at this time?
Yes, thank you.
No. Madam President, in light of what has come to our attention during the last several weeks, I am formally requesting that Director Jessica Clark be removed from two Rockwood responsibilities. Number one, removed as a member of the Rockwood Wellness Committee, and number two, removed as a representative of the Rockwood School District for the Missouri School Boards Association State Meetings. I make a motion that we take a vote on this issue.
Second.
Thank you.
So a motion to remove Director Clark from the two district committees that she serves on, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Are there any other board comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. As an RSD director, I would like to state publicly that I fully support Policy 2100 regarding no discrimination in student rights and Policy 0340 regarding the School Board Code of Ethics. I greatly value our teachers, our administrators, and all of our support staff who every day make a difference in the lives of our students and will support them to the best of my ability now and in the future.
Any other board comments?
Of course. So, over the last few days and even today, we talked a lot about community and all students and all families. Let me remind you that I would not be sitting here if all families and all students felt like they were actually a part of that all. There's no way I would be sitting in this place. So I don't think they were serious about having that conversation. You know, we have some members of the community that can air their grievances and express their concerns, and they get agenda items looking at 7.07. But then we have the other part of that all who actually has to wait for state legislation to make something illegal to address their concerns. So I don't think we're really serious about talking about all. And it is because I sit here on this board that that is actually representation of all. And I mean, that's me and me alone is the reason that all of us create the all. So please remember that.
Madam President, I never thought, in the 11 years plus that I've been on the Board of Education, I would be faced with a situation such as tonight. I haven't been faced with a situation such as tonight. I've had people call me everything for the last 11 years, and the one that really gets me is they say I don't know anything, even though they don't know me because I've been in education for 54 years. As an educator and as a Board member, the only platform I ever ran on was to make sure that every single student in the Rockwood School District learns to their best potential. Now, you've had people on the Board in the past that somebody would ask him, "Why are you running?" They had all kinds of agendas. The agenda could be, "Well, I wanted the Boy Scouts to be able to use the gymnasium." There's been all kinds of things. It's really interesting that there's in our, in our Code of Ethics and our core values, I want to read some of those to you very quickly. "Our mission is to do whatever it takes to ensure all students realize their potential." You saw it on the board a while ago, you're hearing it again. The core values, our core values, affirm that we stand for and now we treat each other and how we treat each other. These values define who we are as a school district, individually and collectively. Every student, we put every student at the heart of everything we do. I want to repeat that. We put every student at the heart of everything we do. And we are guided by academic, social, emotional, and physical needs of our students, not just learning, but the other pieces of a well-rounded person. Our work is to provide a meaningful, challenging education that connects all students to learning and honors their unique gifts. Carrying schools, we find joy in our work and believe in kindness and mutual respect for all. We are, we find joy, once again, in our work and believe in kindness and mutual respect for all. We are guided by strong character, ethics, and integrity. Our schools are warm, welcoming places for children, staff, and families to thrive. We share the responsibility for student learning, growth, and safety. We honor differences as we provide equal access for all learners. In our community, we leverage our strengths to reach challenging goals for lifetime learning. I have lived in the Rockwood School District and worked, and worked in the Rockwood School District for over 35 years. I know what the Rockwood School District is like. As a parent and grandparent, I know how great the Rockwood School District is. When I worked at Maryville University after I retired from, from Rockwood, I went and visited almost every other district in the St. Louis area, the St. Charles area, the Jefferson County area, and Franklin County. There is no other district that compares with Rockwood. If you don't believe it, you go out and look at some of these other districts, some of these other school districts. There are some great school districts, a lot of them. Bill Milligan worked in some of them. There are some great districts, but there is no other district compared in this St. Louis area or even in the state of Missouri to Rockwood School District. If you think otherwise, I don't know what you're thinking or what you've been drinking. Finally, as I said, I never thought I would be up here making this, this speech, and I don't want to make this speech ever again. I want you to believe in the Rockwood Board of Education as our one mission is to make sure all of your sons and daughters, all of your sons and daughters, and our sons and daughters and granddaughters, grand, grand, grandsons, learn to the best of their potential. If we don't do it, we have failed. And if someone doesn't believe that on the Board of Education, that person needs to leave. Thank you.
I spent the day today trying to write a cohesive and well-crafted statement, and I'm just going to throw it away. I have spent, like Keith, many years in education, over 40 years in education, mainly in the area of special education, gifted education, and I've done a lot of work with multi-year systems of support. In my heart, all means all, and it will always be that way. All students need to be valued and respected, and we need to move forward with ensuring that students do meet their full potential. So when I was thinking about this today, I reflected back to six years ago when I became a Board member, and I had to do, I had an oath in office. I had to raise my hand, and, and this is what, what we say. I, in this case Lynn, do solemnly swear that I am, at least 24 years of age, that I am a citizen of the United States and a resident taxpayer of the Rockwood R6 School District in the state of Missouri, and that I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, and that I will abide by and uphold the Rockwood R6 School District Board Member Code of Ethics, and will faithfully demean myself in office. I call your attention to that last piece, and will faithfully demean myself in office. This is something as a Board member, we swear to. I will leave my, my words at that for your, for your thoughts. Thank you.
Jamie, I'd like to address the public here. Like many in the community, I am saddened and disappointed by the events of the last week. As I toured our schools early last week, things felt more normal again. And then Wednesday came and a dark cloud was over our district once again. Our students and staff have been through enough the past two years. They deserve better than this. Events like this affect all of our students and staff, and furthermore, require the attention of many of our district leaders, including Dr. Kane. As we look to move forward after the last two years, we cannot afford to go backwards like this. We have so much to look forward to. To my left, we have the National Superintendent of the Year working for us. And I can't wait to see where he takes us. People often ask, "Why do you put up with this stuff on the Board? Why would you consider running again?" It's because I'm immensely proud of the work that we do as a Board, that we do as a district, and I'm immensely proud to say that I live in Rockwood.
I have something to say. When I was elected, I took that oath that Lynn just talked about, and I said that I will serve my community and all students. I really don't understand why is this Board member okay with causing the amount of disruption, not for the first time, but literally the fourth time. We've only been in office for four months, and we're here today. We made national news. I think it's enough. If you're not here for our education, honestly, I agree with Keith here, just leave. I'm done.
I just want to add a couple of personal items. I spend a lot of time, like all these people have shared tonight, for exactly what Brandy shared, this district and all the students that are in it. Last fall and through the winter, we knew as a Board there would be two new Board members. We didn't know who they would be, but we knew there would be two new people. The goal of this Board is to make sure that we have good things in place so that we have a continuation of a strong Board to lead a very strong district. We have spent a lot of time preparing and creating mentorship programs and coming up with work sessions and training ideas. And throughout that process, starting in April after the election, we assigned those mentors and we began that work. And the importance of the work, no matter how people vote or feel on individual items, is the teamwork that can be accomplished to achieve whatever is going to be in the best interest for all kids. This is most hurtful because of these things. We all are saying the same thing: We love this district. And Director Clark, if you love this district, I certainly hope that you can hear all of the things that are being shared with you tonight, just as we've shared privately and in a public work session, all of the goals, the mission, the vision, the core values, all of the things that are most important for us to get together and work together as a team. To disrupt the team, to disrupt the district, to disrupt us in this way is not teamwork, and this is not how we carry forward the vision and the mission of this district. And this is not how we carry forward the vision and the mission of this district.
Next item tonight, could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
We have. We have. We have. We have three public gifts tonight, donations. First one is Falcons football boosters, Rockwood Summit High School monetary. Get an idea, that's fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars for the support of the Rockwood South High School Football Program. Supports the purchase of new football jerseys. The second one is from Fairway PTO, Fairway Elementary School monetary, three thousand dollars to be used for the purchase of Promethean boards. Anonymous Lafayette High School Facilities, three thousand five hundred dollars for the support of the Lafayette High School Baseball Program. Donation of labor and product for the renovation of the baseball field includes aeration of infield, edging of base paths, and seeding of infield. We thank each of those organizations' donations. Thank you very much, and you'll receive congratulations from us. Thank you.
The motion is to approve the consent agenda items as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. The next item is a school safety plan update. This is information only. Turning it over, I believe, to Dr. Kane.
Thank you, President Baze. So, safe focus is fun, safe focused fun, definitely our theme for this academic school year. But safety is so critical. And we thought that would be very timely and appropriate to share an update of the two thousand and twenty-two report on school safety and security here in the Rockwood School District. So it's not just gonna be me that's speaking in terms of this presentation to provide not only this Board of Education, but our community an update of where we stand as it relates to specific measures in terms of what we are implementing in district to ensure and work towards safety and security across the district. I'm also gonna have other members of the administrative team join me for this presentation. So, we have hit the ground running this school year. Next slide. Okay, we have hit the ground running this school year as this slide clearly indicates. Have had the pleasure to meet with police, police chiefs and chiefs of our fire protection districts as well in, in St. Louis County. And I want you to know, we are so appreciative of the partnership that we have with our first responders. They help keep us all safe. And their willingness to not only partner, but to really work, I mean, at the ground level with our schools, with administration, and with other staff in our, in our district, should absolutely be commended. We are truly appreciative of their efforts. What you do see there is a date. It's September twenty-eighth, which is going to be our district crisis workshop. And I wanna actually highlight via the next slide, if you would, what that is in fact going to entail. I believe for the past couple of years, this has been a workshop that this district's engaged in, but it's been in a virtual format. This year, we're gonna have a face-to-face conversation. You can see the various stakeholders that are gonna be there. It is a really powerful mechanism that's been in place for years here in Rockwood, help, to help build that collaboration and collegiality amongst everyone that you see on that particular slide, just so that we can ensure this notion of safety. It is so critical that we have it in place. Educators say this, Maslow's hierarchy of need before Bloom's taxonomy. To make sure that everyone is safe, we need to have it in place so that we can ultimately do what we do best in terms of focus on instruction in our daily walk and daily works every single day I'm here in the district. Next slide. I'm gonna take the clicker next time, but next slide. Safety. And we're gonna talk in more specific, specifically, just a few slides here, about the measures that are in place in Rockwood. And I want something to be very, very clear. It's not something that just started July one. This has been a longstanding effort in this district, in the support. At the ballot is truly appreciated and it's necessary. This is an ever-changing threat horizon that we're dealing with, and so we have to respond accordingly. We're constantly walking this line of we want our students to be safe, but we don't want them to be afraid, walking in fear. And the same is true of our staff and any of our stakeholders that are coming into our schools. We're constantly walking that line of an appropriate level of safety, but no one walking in fear. And so, it's really important to point out that what's happened in this district in two thousand and fifteen, and I believe in two thousand and seventeen as well, in terms of bond initiatives, have helped to fuel what you see on the slide behind me in terms of the physical safety measures. And we will reveal, review those in just a moment so that you all have an idea in terms of what that's looked like. Personnel, we cannot do this work in terms of ensuring as much safety as possible without having quality personnel in place. Protocols and training, we're gonna talk about a sequence, a rhythm that we are developing as relates to protocols and training, not only for staff, but also for students. This year is going to look different, and we're working to make sure that we have consistency in terms of messaging and expectations as well as, as well. Social and emotional security, it is really something that this district is doing that should be commended. It's something that I can assure you, other districts are watching Rockwood to see what is it that we are doing as it relates to social, emotional health and wellbeing of students. And it's something that's being monitored and watched from a distance because people are really looking at what we're doing and using it as an example. And communication, it is so critical that we are effectively communicating. Even when we are engaged in drills and trainings, we're gonna need our first responder community, as well as our patrons, to understand, for example, that October third's going to look different in district, and you may see things. It is all a part of a plan, and we want everyone to be aware of that. So with that, we will actually start with the physical safety measures. Now I'll ask Mr. Dennis to actually lead through this part of the presentation.
Good evening. For you all, you all that don't know me, I'm Director of School Safety, Tyrone Ty Dennis. Been here approximately, I'm coming up on my third year. I'm gonna talk to you about the physical safety measures that are in place, that have been in place, and we're just, wanted to get it out to the public because last school year, we received a lot of questions about our safety measures. So we wanted to let you know exactly what is in place. As you can see, we have secured entrance, locked doors, safety glass, and different things like that. For me, visitor management is our new system. For some of you who have visited our schools, School Pass is the new system that is in place. With School Pass, we're able to check for sex offenders. Me as a parent in this district as well, I wanna know who my child is around. I wanna be able to monitor that. And so that is the new visitor management system. We're in day eleven, I believe, so we've had some hiccups every now and then. But overall, everything has been working smoothly. What else? Intruder alarms, our security cameras. We are now in the process of doing security walkthroughs at all our schools. And the security walkthroughs are basically checking for things that can be updated. Locking mechanisms, different things like that, different cameras that can be updated, changed. Some of the cameras, the principals know better about their buildings than anybody. So we're getting with the principals, assistant principals, and basically doing a walkthrough through each building. Internal classroom locking mechanisms, phones, internal two-way communication, and something new as well as nine-one-one RTA. Nine-one-one RTA was something that was introduced to us for free, and it basically provides a geofence around all our buildings, all thirty-five buildings. And it actually alerts us every time a nine-one-one call goes out in the district. That helps us prepare to be able to know if we need to lock down a building or what's going on in our buildings or in and around our buildings. We're constant in communication with our five police jurisdictions to basically figure out what's going on so we can react accordingly. Next slide. You often hear us talk about SROs, our School Resource Officers. We basically have had a relationship with our local jurisdictions for over twenty-five years. This is nothing new. We actually have monthly meetings with our SROs. I supervise the SROs, and anytime they have an incident at their schools, on the phone, texting, trying to get updates so I can update our board and cabinet. Parking attendants and hall monitors, they play a huge role in the safety throughout the school. They are the ones at the front at most schools, checking people in and making sure that our buildings are safe. Next slide. Like I said, we have monthly safety meetings with our SROs that are now going to include our principals. We have, are now introducing bi-monthly community meetings with the community as well. I introduced something called conversations with the SROs when I came, where I felt that our students need to know the police officers that are walking through their buildings. They're not just police there to bust them or do something. They need to know them. Our students will know what's going on in the buildings long before any adult. And if they have those relationships with our SROs, we hope that they will be able to communicate, and it wouldn't be the first time they're communicating when something happens. So that's why we do that. We actually get on a Zoom call once a month, and we're able, the children are able to ask the officers anything that they want. And it has received nothing but positive feedback. Some of the kids learned things about the officers that they've never had an opportunity to find out. District and school crisis planning, we have drills in place, intruder training that is coming up. We also have earthquake, tornado, fire drills, things of that nature. Our first quarter, we are actually doing tabletops that are gonna roll out to our schools, and they're gonna basically discuss with their staffs and students about what intruder drills look like and different things like that. In the second quarter, after we have our intruder training, October third, they will then actually do a real-life drill and be able to understand how that looks and things of that nature. All our staff will review intruder training October third, that they will be getting intruder updates and things like that. Due to COVID, we've had to kind of pull back and different things like that, and we're trying to bring that back up. Next. I'm going to pass the mic to Ms. Deb Ketchum.
Thank you, Ty. In my twenty-five years here, the expectations for the use of technology have changed greatly. We went from having a few computers in classrooms to, and only being accessible during certain hours of the day, to now every student, every staff member has access. It's ubiquitous. They have it whenever they want it, whenever they need it. And with that, our needs for cybersecurity have changed dramatically. And we have a lot of cybersecurity measures in place that are things we've had for twenty-five years. We also have some new ones, and I wanna highlight those newer ones. And the most important one is our end-user training. We have implemented an end-user training program this year that is going to start with focusing on phishing. And its purpose is to help all of our staff and our secondary students become more aware of what a phishing message looks like, how they should respond, what they can do with it, what they should do with it, and help us prevent any misuse of their credentials or just even propagating spam or nuisance emails. So we're working on that this year. We've also implemented a twenty-four-seven monitoring system this year. We have a third party that is helping us with that. My staff that handles that is seven people, and that's a full-time job for more than that number of people. So we have a company that's working on that. We're also implementing multi-factor authentication in phases over the next six to eighteen months, depending on the system. And lastly, I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware that we have had a business continuity plan since two thousand and three. And we have evolved that plan to the point now, it's, it's actually three plans. There's a business continuity plan, a cybersecurity plan, and an incident response plan. And they each have different purposes. But I want you to all feel confident that we do have these things. We are, we are doing our best to be prepared for anything that comes our way. With that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. LaPac.
Thank you, Mrs. Ketchum. As Dr. Kane explained, communications, obviously, in a crisis is so important that we share timely and accurate information with our staff, with our students, with our parents, and with our community members. We have a hotline that we can activate in a crisis where people can call to get up-to-date information. This year, we have Parent Square, which is a new communication tool that we are really excited about. One of the features that we really like about Parent Square is that staff and families can go in and set their own preferences. They can decide how they want to receive that information, whether it's a text message or an email, whether or not they wanna receive things as it's sent out by its school, or if they want a daily digest that they receive at the end of the day. And so, but when we have a crisis and an emergency situation, we can override those preferences so that we're notifying everyone with all of those tools at the same time. Also, we have ten steps to crisis communication. We have protocols set up for everything from a bus accident to a lockdown, any kind of an emergency situation. We, we have a wonderful department of professionals, and everyone plays a role in that so we can get information out as quickly as possible. I also wanna mention that building relationships with our first responders is so very important. We build that foundation of trust and familiarity so that when we do have a crisis, we know each other and we can work together quickly to get information out to you as soon as possible. Dr. Harris is next.
Thank you, Mary. I, when we were putting together this presentation, I asked Dr. Kane if I can go last. I wanted to go last because I wanted to end on talking about our students. And so I wanna be very clear that when we are talking about school safety, what we believe is the foundation of school safety is emotional safety. And emotional safety lies in building a healthy community where all students, all adults feel like they belong and they are part of a community. All your students are part of our community. All your students are loved. All your students are loved. All your students are loved. One of the things that we talk about in the Rockwood School District is how big we are. And so I just wanna say that we have space for all students. And so, we have this multi-tiered system of support, and it really start, the emotional safety really starts with the classroom teacher. So the classroom teacher is the beginning, actually, the bus driver is the beginning of emotional safety. Then the cafeteria worker. The people who are serving food, then the teachers. And then we have all these specialties, these, the school counselors, thank you, the therapists, social workers, or social emotional behavior specialists, which are trained social workers that really have more intense students with, with needs that they are, they're working with. Obviously, our nurses, thank you so much to Dr. Kinder, who has really advocated for nurses over the course of his years, and we have increased our nurses at every level. And just recently, Dave Cobb and his team created Student Behavior Specialists. We know with COVID happening, kids didn't necessarily go to daycare, and so some of our little ones came in with different behaviors that we needed to, to correct. And instead of suspending kids or kicking kids out of our community, we wanted to make sure that we have resources to support those students. And so these are the systems that we have in place in the Rockwood School District. When Dr. Kinder talks about other school districts around, and Rockwood School District being great, I, I always ask that we put up this, this data, this information to show you that is very simple for us, and we sometimes take for granted in the Rockwood School District, but not every single student, or school around the state can say they have all these things in place. Not, not all schools can say that. And they, and we can say that because what we believe is that school safety starts with emotional safety. And so we want to make sure that our students are emotionally safe. As we continue to the next slide, we've created... I'm the next slide. As we continue to the next slide, we've created, I'm the next slide. As we move to the next slide, we created a new center that's called Pathway Wellness Center. So what we know is that there are certain students that because of anxiety, depression, or maybe some other challenges that they're facing, that they're smart and capable of graduating, but the traditional school setting doesn't work for them. And so thank you to the Board of Education for allowing our team to reimagine alternative education. I'm happy to say that we opened our new wellness center and we have 43 students and the best compliment, I would definitely encourage our board to go and take a look. Thank you to Tammy for serving on the committee and really pushing us to think differently about some of the work that we're doing. One of the best compliments that happened was a kid came on the first day of school and the teacher shared with me, the kid said, "I really feel like this center was created for me." Right? And that was like the best compliment ever. And this kid hasn't missed a day at school since we started and attendance was an issue. So thank you. One of the things that Dr. Kane said to me when, when I first met him or during our first meeting, he said, "Hey, the region is watching you guys with this Hazel Health As of today, we have over 130 students who have received support through Hazel Health. We have 32 schools in the Rockwood School District. At least 24, or 24 of the 32 schools have at least one student who has participated in telehealth therapy. Telehealth is not because our social workers, our counselors, our teachers are not great. It's because some of the challenges that we're seeing are so intense and increasing so much that we need extra support. Our board recognized that and allowed us to implement this service that is helping our students. And so when Dr. Kane, you say that the region is watching, they are watching, but it's a good watch and we're going to be able to share good information from the work that we're doing with Hazel Health. All students have a Champions that started when Dr. Canos was here probably five or six years ago and we're continuing to do that. Courage to Report is our new tip line. So if there's something going on, our teachers and students are being trained on how to use the tip line service to be able to report something. And the last thing I end on is see something, say something. We typically think about that in a traditional sense of safety, but what we want you to understand from an emotional standpoint, if there's any kid or any child that feels like they're being kicked out of the community or not accepted and your child sees that, we want them to say something so that again, we can make sure that every student, all 20,000 students in the Rockwood School District, no one understands that we are big enough to hold space for all the students in our community.
Any board members have any questions? I believe is the slide. All right. Great presentation. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is could I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting calendar for August through December 2023 and January through July 2024?
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
President Bayes, if I may, that date in February?
Yes.
Potentially need to flex around that, definitely that week, but potentially earlier in that week, if that's okay.
Yep.
Have we checked against the MSBA dates for those November meetings?
Well, Janet, as you know, or someone who created this amazing list, noted in July, or I'm sorry, November, only one meeting this month due to MSBA. So it looks like that was taken into consideration. Yep.
What'd you ask, Tammy? I couldn't hear any.
MSBA.
The MSBA conference, it's typically in November, so it's, there's a spot held for that in case it continues in that. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, so the motion is to approve the Board of Education meeting calendar for August through December 2023 and January through July 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. And the last two more little items, the proposed agenda for the September 15th Board of Education Scrolling on the screen. And then future agenda presentations and events to attend. Just check your Google Calendar for upcoming events. Anybody have any comments about either? All right, we will get to our second section of patron comments and I will read a statement before we get started. We will now hear from those Rockwood patrons who have signed up to speak about non-agenda items. As a reminder, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Combining time or giving your time to someone else to speak is not allowed. Only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time. Please remember that comments about individual employees and/or students will not be permitted in public session. We expect that you will remain civil and respectful in your remarks and if anyone becomes disruptive, we reserve the right to cut your three minutes short. Verbally aggressive language and vulgarity in any form is not acceptable, whether you're reading someone else's remarks or they are your own, it will not be tolerated. For your convenience, our three-minute time clock is ready.
First, I wanted to say this, there's been a lot of attack on a certain board member. It's not, I'm not on your side. It's not because we hate you. It's not. It's not. It's because we, we cannot believe what you said unapologetically when given multiple instances to apologize or to correct or to give context, though there is no context, there is no context that these words are okay. For the kids, I'd like just to read a story for any kids that are watching or at high school, I don't care. It's a story written by Margaret O'Hare. Please don't sue me for copyright infringement because my, my heart is in the right place here. It's called You Are Enough. It's a book about inclusion. Here goes a, some people don't understand, oh my, how do you fix this? I have a time freeze by chance while, technical difficulties? Oh, no, no, obviously. Shh, shh, quiet. Okay. Here we go. No two people are exactly the same. We are all unique. That's what is great. Being different is what makes you special. You are just right, exactly as you are. Being different can be lonely. You may feel like you don't belong, but we're all in this together and we can all be friends. Everyone needs friends. Friends help one another. Friends learn from one another. Friends know that no two people are alike. A friend will celebrate you just as you are. I hope there's some kids listening, it's not just adults, or I hope some adults are listening that need to. But some people do not understand, they think being different is scary. Scary. It's not. Try to be good, try to be brave, try to be strong and let people see the real you. So we're here to, not to hate. I, I'm sorry, you are getting a lot of flack, a lot of flack and that, and that, I don't like that. I really don't. I have a child with Down Syndrome and it's baloney. But your words hurt bad, very bad. So I challenge any of the, I'm in the wrong audience first off. I'm in the wrong section. Sorry. I didn't know of the assigned seating or whatnot. I challenge anyone up here to show me their Christian or their conservative views that have anything to do with this.
Can you give him an extra 30 seconds? Can you give him an extra 30 seconds?
He can finish what he's saying right here.
It wasn't his fault.
You, you may finish yours, whatever you were saying.
I'm about there, but you know, 30 seconds, I'll take it. Why not, you know? I just want, I just want people to get along. I really do. I, I'm sick of the way the world is right now. I'm sick of it. So please, please can we just see each other's value? And care about one another?
The next speaker is Aiden Rickers.
Hello and good evening to the board and Dr. Kane. Welcome to the district. My name is Aiden Rickers. My pronouns are he/him. And for those of you, which is most of you who don't know me, I'm a senior at Summit High School and I've been a member of this community and Rockwood Schools since kindergarten. In fact, I know one of the board's sons and we went to CCL together. I perform in my high school's highest level of orchestra. I have a 4.1 weighted GPA and as of last year, I've taken many AP exams, of which I scored high marks on all of them. Over, thank you. Over the summer, I had a, an incredible opportunity to work with the ACLU of Missouri. I was one of two high schoolers who have ever been allowed to do so. Additionally, I was featured in my school yearbook for my wonderful outfits. I think they're wonderful. I wore them to my junior prom last year. I am also obviously openly gay. I can't tell you just how many small slights, infractions I deal with on a daily basis, whether it's looks, scoffs, or jerkish grins. I've been pelted with wet paper towels before and threatened and as well as sexually assaulted and groped in school. Thankfully, I'm confident and strong and these things don't really bother me. Recently, I've become hyper-aware and concerned about the well-being of students in our Rockwood community, especially based on the comments made by some board members. Faced with these issues of popular legitimacy among the people, I offer a few suggestions to the board that they may take under consideration. I feel personally that the board should consider including a group of four students, one from each high school, which would represent the opinions of the students of Rockwood Schools. And whether or not they have any legal votes in the board, it would be wonderful for our consideration to be taken under. And I would also add that when the board members come and visit our schools, that they speak to an administrator. I guarantee you, they have a shortlist of students who would love to speak to any board member about concerns they have directly. Giving us that platform allows us to tell you what our concerns are directly. This is great, but there's a lot of students who might not feel comfortable to do so. And I would just like to end with that, I find most often, students which are overlooked and disregarded tend to have strong opinions to share. They might not always be willing to do so, but when they do choose to share, I ask that you listen and heed what they say. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jocelyn Wagner.
All right. Hello. In this school alone, there are signs in every single classroom that list four core values: kindness, commitment, integrity, and respect. There are many students, staff members, and community members who embody these values. This is true and I, as a student of Rockwood, am incredibly grateful for it. But unfortunately, I can't say this about everyone. As a student myself, as a child, I am very aware that we are still moldable, still impressionable, and still being influenced by adults, the people around us. In any organization involving children, especially in education, the adults must set a good example, lest harmful, hateful, and perhaps even violent behaviors foster, grow, and continue. Within our country at large, a base cornerstone is the rule of law. No one is above the rules. If someone is being hurtful, if someone is blatantly shattering the guidelines meant to protect children who are the future of this world, should they not face the consequences of their actions? It cannot stand. I ask all of you listening, no matter what you believe in, just as a person with basic human respect, don't let anything like this go on without notice and without action. Don't be the one to ruin a future or maybe even a Norse, stand by and let it happen.
Thank you. My name is Sally Nickel. I use she/her pronouns. I'm here tonight to read a letter written anonymously by a Rockwood staff member. Dear Rockwood School Board Members, I am both a staff member and a parent in the Rockwood School District. I'm writing to address my concerns related to the disparaging remarks directed towards students and families in our district made by a specific board member. I understand that the board has already released a statement regarding this matter, which is appreciated. I do, however, have continued concerns about the impact and implications of one of our newest board members' comments on the Rockwood community. Our students must know that they have the support of those entrusted with their education and safety. It is so disappointing and discouraging as a staff member and a parent to know that one of the people with this very important role so clearly does not have our students' interests as a priority. This board director's recent public statements have made it clear that she is unable to effectively represent all of the students and families in our district. She has made her bias known and her remarks are hurtful to the whole community, but in particular, students with disabilities, members of the LGBTQ community, and their families. As a staff member that works in special education, I am deeply troubled that we have a board member that has made such a clear and unapologetic stance against some of our most vulnerable students and their families. These students need advocates and support more than ever. As adults and community members, we must all set an example for our children to follow. I want to make sure that our families and the Rockwood community know that as staff members, we care about the well-being, education, and safety of all of our students. While this board member may have been voted into her current position, the majority of our community did not choose her. I believe the majority of the Rockwood staff and community do not share and actively denounce her views. We must do better for all of our students. I share the position with many community members that this member should resign from her position as a board member. She has shown that she cannot and will not objectively carry out her duties as a board member of the Rockwood School District. She has made it apparent she does not understand or care about the unique needs of our diverse student population. My hope going forward is that the Rockwood School Board will continue to actively support the diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility for our school community and unequivocally, I can't say that word, denounce any intolerance and disrespect towards our students and family. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, a caring community member.
My name is Elizabeth Louter and I'm the parent of two children in the Rockwood School District. September is suicide prevention month. This is a cause every parent and board member can and should support. Yet everyone on the current board- Yet everyone on the current board doesn't seem to want to prevent suicide of our children. My statement is based on dozens of studies I've cited and can share with the board. Gender expansive youth are at significantly heightened risk of suicide compared to their cisgender peers. Their rates of suicide attempts is extremely high at 41%. Transgender people who are exposed to conversion efforts and non-affirming behavior anytime in their lives have more than doubled the odds of attempting suicide and having significant psychological distress compared with those who haven't. To help prevent child suicide rates, we should be providing community-wide acceptance of differences, valuing diversity, and mental health care services, or what Dr. Harris referred to as emotional safety. The presence of the following increases rates of child suicide: bullying and other hostile behaviors; voicing stigma or discrimination based on gender identity, sexual orientation, race, or disability. By the way, all of these things are covered in the SEL package only one board member voted against. Why would someone want to withhold suicide prevention measures in our schools? I'm in shock that I have to say this out loud to adults who are also parents. Stop hurting our kids. Every time you make fun of kids, their pronouns, and their parents, you're harming children. We've all seen a board member engage proudly in non-affirming behavior. This is discrimination. It is hostile and verbally abusive bullying. It's dangerous and should not be tolerated by the board or the Rockwood community. Parents are allowed to hold whatever beliefs they want. I firmly believe that. What you shouldn't be allowed to do is endanger the emotional safety of kids by advocating for non-affirming behaviors and serve on a board of education in a public school. Board members who cannot agree to and abide by the revised code of ethics today should be terminated or resign immediately. You are not safe. Stay away from my children. My only agenda is to keep my kid alive.
Next speaker is Michelle Cleavorn.
Hi. I love Rockwood. Wonderful things happen on our schools every day. I know this because I'm part of this dedicated learning community. I've been teaching for 24 years in Rockwood and I see the dynamic magic happen every day for every student across the district. Tonight, I'm not here as a teacher, but as a parent in the district who has entrusted my children into this amazing district. I'm a parent of a child with Down Syndrome who is full of wonderful capabilities, a child who is thriving in her school because of dedicated teachers and staff who make connections with her, love her, accept her, challenge her, include her, and celebrate her many gifts, hard-won successes, and unique contributions. Last week, she told us her favorite thing about school and it was an area that she struggles in, PE. But because those coaches made connections with her and treated her just like her peers, it became her favorite. My daughter is also very shy and rarely talks in new situations, but she shared an all-about-me bag in front of her class because the teacher took the time to make a safe, inclusive classroom environment for all of her students. Unfortunately, while all these hallmark moments happened last week in my child's school and others across the district, it was overshadowed by the language of hate and bullying from one board member about children and families in our district. Children and families who bring their trust to the place of learning. Hate has no place in civil society and especially not in Rockwood. The R-word in any form is never appropriate. To hear someone representing Rockwood using demeaning words about our children was shocking and heartbreaking. In Rockwood, we have a mission. We do whatever it takes to ensure all students realize their potential. When anyone in Rockwood, especially a board member, acts in a way that belittles our mission, it diminishes all students and does not allow students, especially those from enriching diverse groups, to reach their potential. The education of our children should not be political. We are in the business of teaching students how to think, not what to think. A board member's comments teaches our stu-, taught our students and community that bullying and belittling is acceptable. Her views and statements do not support Rockwood's core values and causes harm to the community. Dr. Kane and board members, I ask that you issue a strong statement against that board member's comments and take action to show this hurtful speech is not tolerated by anyone representing Rockwood. I would also like to know what action will be taken to ensure all students and families are accepted, safe, and included in Rockwood. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Fabian Marta.
Hello. I remember my first board meeting. It was at the height of lockdowns. And I remember what got me out there. It was the memo, the memo that we all know. It's the one that got parents upset. The two curriculums memo. The famous memo said, "Parents are complaining that we are pushing an agenda. We're pushing critical race theory. We're making white kids feel bad about their privilege. We're teaching kids to be social activists." And the solution? Don't throw out your lessons. Just pull the resource off of Canvas so parents can't see it. Keep teaching, just don't make anything visible in Canvas. This is not being deceitful. That's what got me out. That's what got a lot of parents out. The difference now, though, is it's harder to hide. You know, we had a, we had a recent vote. Obviously, the majority spoke when they voted in the new candidates. That's the way a vote works. The majority, the majority wins. And we have, I'm glad to see that we have more diversity on the, on the board. We do have at least one of the board members who is standing by their campaign promises. And they voted down a, the Jessica Jones thing that was submitted by the Director of Education, Equity, and Diversity. That's the gender unicorn lady. Listen, we should be focusing on academics. You know, a 15-year-old Chinese student blitzed the, the Western peers in math, reading, and science. They do it because they focus on the subject material. In America, we teach that America is an oppressive regime of whiteness. Equity is a linguistic trick. It sounds close enough to equality, but equity can only truly be achieved in a totalitarian It doesn't, equity, you can't have equal outcome in every situation. People are different. People have unique gifts. That's it. You know, you have our support. The community has spoken.
Next speaker is Jalen Hill.
Okay, so one of the biggest reasons I wanted to come up here and speak today is because I think most people forget that everyone is human and everyone has emotions. I think most people go home and think that they can hide behind a screen and talk bad about other people because it makes them feel good about themselves. I think everyone forgets that everyone on the board, sitting on the board right now, has a family to go home to. They have emotions, just like you do. And everyone sits here today and talks about, "We're being bullied, we're not, we're not being included," all this stuff. But then you go home and sit behind a screen and talk bad about someone. I just, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's right. And the school talks, the district talks so much about wanting to include everyone and advocating for everyone, but everyone is not feeling included. People are feeling left out in this district and no one is talking about it. Everyone is ignoring it. And I just wanted to bring up that if you look up the definition of libtard, because everyone seems so upset about that word, it's referring to someone that is, has left-wing political views, has nothing to do with disabilities, has nothing to do with being an ableist. I feel like if you're gonna come out here and preach about certain things, you should be able to back it up. For people that are so mad about certain things, why are you guys coming out here without researching the things that you're talking about? I think that it's, you guys are hypocrites. You sit here and you talk about one specific board member, about how rude she is, about how unconsiderate she is, but then you go home and you threaten her. You go to her radio show and you, you expose their personal information. But if she did that to you, she would be homophobic and racist and an ableist. But you go behind the screen and you do the same exact thing. So I just want to say, everyone should take a second to think about their actions and about how you guys are a bunch of hypocrites. You guys do the same exact thing that she's doing, but then she's an ableist, a racist, and homophobic for doing it. Thank you, that's all.
Next speaker is Olivia Stark.
I'm gonna ask you all a question. What does it mean to be a leader? A leader is someone who stands up for people and brings them together, not someone who tears people apart. I'm Olivia. I'm the vice president of the Eureka High School's Gender and Sexuality Advocacy Club, and I'm 15. For 15 years, I have learned to be a respectful, polite person, but a certain member of the board has had over double that and still hasn't seemed to figure it out. I know a lot of people are here tonight to comment on this matter, giving reasons on why she should or shouldn't resign from the board. I'm not here to have an opinion, I'm here to help you establish yours. Let's start with the basics. On August 25th, a hateful member was videoed projecting hurtful speech about the transgender and disabled communities, saying how, quote, "People show up to the meetings with their gay flag saying, 'I'm homophobic, transphobic, I say blank, and I'm an ableist,' unquote." Everybody knows that part, but what a lot of people don't know is what else she said, specifically what she said to represent herself. Her words were, quote, "Our district deserves, serves an incredibly diverse population, requiring a board representing true diversity, diversity in perspective, background, and value. As a mother, I represent the parents whose children are directly impacted by the board's decisions," unquote. But what about the parents of a kid on a ventilator that isn't allowed in the school? And the parents of a trans kid who isn't allowed in the bathroom of their choices? Those parents have to represent themselves because to her, diversity is anything that aligns with her political views and attacking those she believes don't belong. On the Rockwood official website, it says, "You are guided by the needs of the students and ensure a warm and welcoming school environment. Board members are expected or required to abide by these rules. But our school environment has turned cold-littered with harassers that start at the top. When someone in power speaks out horrifically against minorities, it normalizes to us impressionable kids that it's okay to discriminate, leading to unkind, rude, and unempathetic people of, in society, akin the opposite of what Rockwood is striving for." So once again, I'm asking, what makes a leader? A leader is someone who checks the boxes of inspiring others, speaking up, trying their best, and taking responsibility. The board member should be suspended if not, if possible, and if not, I call for a re-vote to try and get this hate speech off of the board. Because why should we let someone lead if they don't check all the boxes? Thank you.
Next speaker is Johanna Bodine. Johanna Bodine, are you speaking?
So I signed up to speak earlier and I read my agenda item. They thought they wouldn't get through the full 30 minutes, but I think it's really important for me to reiterate something that a young girl just said. I'm gonna redo something that I saw this week that kind of stuck with me and the hypocritical nature of what the board just did is alarming, honestly. You sat here harming children for two years. My child, who had, you talked to me about suicide, I saw it firsthand. It wasn't because somebody used mean words toward them. It was true, it was a true mental breakdown because of what was happening in our schools at that time, because of decisions that were made by this board and the way they were asking the staff in the schools to implement their safety protocol calls. I've been here and I've spoke about it again, but it, it rose up in me. And when you put labels on people, the way you have done tonight, the way all of these individuals have done, the way you misrepresent words, the girl who stood up here and gave the definition of libtard didn't grow up in this district, she moved here. She moved here from another part of this, of the St. Louis region. She has a different cultural background, different experience than you, and she was right. But you create this narrative that the comments were about disabled children when there's, they weren't. It's a lie. It's a narrative. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the board acting as though that's what it was. The board president? In reinforcing that? I don't know if you even watched the video. I don't know that you even had a conversation. It is really, really despicable and I 100% agree. There needs to be a lot of self-reflection from the adults on that stage.
Next speaker is Angela Mernan.
Hi, my name's Angela Mernan. I'm a mom of a very proud 2021 Rockwood Summit graduate who, despite having autism and related learning disabilities and social-emotional issues, all through his formative years, excelled academically and is killing it at college today, thanks to the wonderful teachers, educators, and admins he had through his 14 years at Rockwood. So, thank you for that. One of those teach, one teacher within our district reached out to me and asked if I would read a comment from her because she is nervous about any parent retribution if she showed up herself. So I'm speaking on behalf of this educator. I am a Rockwood parent and staff member, and I am afraid to show my face at a board meeting for fear of retaliation or being targeted. Every day, students fill my classroom where I care for them and love them and try to teach them to be decent human beings. I'm a teacher, but also a mentor, nurse, counselor, babysitter, human shield, data analyst, confidant. analyst, confidant, janitor, librarian, snack provider, hall monitor, advocate, and a mandatory reporter. I'm an experienced educator with 20 years at Rockwood, a master's degree, and 30 additional college credits. But to some people in this room, they think I am also a groomer handing out porn, an indoctrinator because I'm college-educated, a terrorist because I'm a member of the NEA, a reverse racist because I believe in teaching accurate American history, a sheep because I follow science and those who actually did the real research, a pedophile because I support my students of all genders and sexualities, a snowflake because I believe in equity and equality, and a libtard, which is obviously a form of the highly offensive R-word. Remember the days teachers were respected and praised. What happened to this society? You expect us to protect your children's physical health during an active shooter crisis, but when we try to protect their mental health, we're the enemy. You are driving us en masse out of the classroom, and for what? Forget CRT and SEL and DIE and all the other banned acronyms that are your latest boogeymen. You will be lucky if anyone is left to teach your reading, writing, and arithmetic. Please stop this nonsense and stop attacking us. We are just trying to teach our content and create a safe space for your children, all of your children. Rockwood commits to doing whatever it takes to ensuring all students realize their potential, all students, those with disabilities, those with, those who are LGBTQIA, those who are black, white, and every other color. If you don't agree with our mission statement, you don't have to stay in Rockwood. If you don't support all children, then who exactly do you support? Rockwood's website says, "Our core values affirm what we stand for and how we treat each other." Thank you.
Next speaker is John Hunkins. Annie John. All right, next speaker is Zach Winslow.
So please excuse my use of this word, we've avoided it all night, but it's not better when it's abbreviated or put into a cutesy slur. I did some research just now, libtard is a noun, a contemptuous term for a person with left-wing political views, and its origin is in the earliest, early 21st century, a blend of the words liberal and retard. So if there was any question before, that's where it came from, and now we all know. Intolerance, by definition, is the absence or elimination of tolerance. Therefore, as intolerance takes hold, tolerance is lost until ultimately tolerance is eliminated entirely. This is the tolerance paradox. In order to preserve tolerance, we must be intolerant of intolerance. This is not the elimination of free speech. Free speech is fundamental to our democracy and to our community, though we are each responsible for our own words and actions. Rather, this is an ongoing and endlessly renewed decision by our community to reject intolerant views when they are expressed. This means the tolerant must accept this responsibility to continuously renew our commitment to protecting the marginalized among us and those who the intolerant would exclude. Because intolerance is not new, and it's not going anywhere. That's how it's always been, and that's just humanity for you. But we will not stop either. All students, all students. Thank you, Dr. Kane, thank you to almost all of the board. I'd like to thank the board for taking timely action and publishing the revised policy 0340 and adding it to today's agenda. And thank you for not being hesitant with your words tonight. This is the leadership and the condemnation of harmful rhetoric our community needed tonight. I hope you can see the positive impact that you've done today. I'd like to read select texts of a few district and board policies prior to the revision that I found especially relevant in the past week in light of recent name-calling and so-called jokes. School Board Policy 0311 Regarding Attendance Conflict of Interest Section. Members shall avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and shall not use the board position for personal or partisan gain. School Board Policy 0340 Code of Ethics. The rules of the members of the Board of Education are: Number 6, to respect and encourage the right of others to hold and express opinions; Number 11, to avoid any comments which may be interpreted as undermining the administration of the district. Rockwood School District Regulation 2130 Regarding Harassment. Examples of conduct which may constitute harassment because of disability include: Jokes, rumors, or name-calling based on an individual's physical or mental disability; Slurs, negative stereotypes, and hostile acts which are based upon another physical or mental disability. Examples of conduct which may constitute harassment because of sexual orientation or significant sexual orientation or gender identity include: Name-calling, jokes or rumors, slurs, negative stereotypes, and hostile acts based on the same. Investigation. In determining whether the alleged conduct constitutes a violation of the regulation, the district shall consider, whether there were past incidents or past continuing patterns of behavior, the identity of the perpetrator, including whether the perpetrator was in a position of power over the student allegedly subjected to harassment. Thank you.
Next speaker is Diane Mulkey.
I want to begin by expressing my appreciation to the board, the members of the board, and the time you take with your talents and your skills and your interest and your love for our schools and our students. My name is Diane Mulkey and I'm a grandparent of, actually, 18, 18 children. And I've been in the Rockwood School District for over 50, well over 50 years. And I have to just make a couple comments. I agree wholeheartedly with the school board member who stated intolerance and disrespect in our school district have no place in our school district. Currently, I've heard it suggested that conservative values are inconsiderate of gender-expansive students. I do not feel that this is true. What I do believe, and was actually, and this was actually supported at the last school board election, is that the Rockwood community is looking for a better education system for our students. Please know there's always, always room for improvement. Until the state of Missouri can provide better options for parents through an education voucher system or an educational savings account, et cetera, we concerned citizens have a right to do what we can to improve what is happening now. The Missouri Senate bill, I think it was 775, forgive me if I'm wrong with that number, is one step in that direction. If parents of gender-expansive children feel that their children need a more graphic description of what they need to learn, then they can get a lot of that information from the public library. As a Christian, when I raised my five children, the schools were not teaching them about God or His love for us. But I took it as my parental responsibility to supplement that training, teaching at home. I now realize that over the years, our school district is much more focused on the needs of some rather than the needs of many, which I believe, should, I believe, should be, to learn about our country's Judeo-Christian heritage, about the mistakes we've made in this country, and about our hopes for the future. I believe as parents, we should help our children to learn to accept differences in others and to love one another. It is not our position to judge, it is his. He's called us to love one another. And I just believe strongly that if we could all focus more on that, it would certainly help down the road. And I have two seconds left to say, I hope that we will get a list of the graphic books that have been removed from the library.
The next speaker is Jocelyn Yedleka.
If you want to hand it to the officer. Tonight, I would like to read from the Rockwood School Board's Equity Resolution. Whereas the Rockwood School District is known throughout the St. Louis region, state of Missouri, and beyond as an exemplar school district, whereas the district's mission statement is, "We do whatever it takes to ensure all students realize their potential." Whereas the district Board of Education has been and continues to be committed to helping all students thrive. Whereas the district has been and remains committed to understanding and valuing history as it affects our institutional viability, vitality. Whereas the district believes that, as an exemplar educational institution, it must continuously, intentionally, consciously, and deliberately reimagine and create an educational system that centers on equity. Whereas the district has and continues to believe in the fundamental right to a free, appropriate education whereby all district students thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Whereas the district has been and continues to be committed to identifying conscious and unconscious biases and eliminating barriers to educational achievement in our schools. Whereas the district has and will continue to create policies and practices that are rooted in empathy, fairness, and justice. Therefore, be it resolved on this 23rd day of July 2020, that the district, by and through its Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools, will continue to relentlessly pursue systemic improvements to policies, practices, and programs, and continue to provide educational opportunities to ensure that every student and staff member, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, perceived sexual orientation, genetic information, marital status, age, national origin, disability, or economic status, can fully realize the district's mission statement and thrive in this district and beyond. Be further resolved that the Board of Education believes the district's work can only be realized by ensuring teachers, administrators, students, parents, and community members organize in unity to collectively continue to implement the district's mission. You have that statement in front of you. In 2020, you guys signed it, wrote on it with a pen. 2021, you reaffirmed it. We have a new superintendent, we have new board members, we have a new school here. Will you sign it today?
Next speaker is Luke Barber.
My name is Luke Barber. I'm a disability advocate that was appointed to the St. Louis County Commission on Disabilities, and I'm a current candidate for state representative of District 89. Let me remind you that hate speech is the abusive and threatening speech or writing that is prejudiced towards a protected class such as race, religion, sex, or disability. Let me also remind you that hate speech is not protected by the First Amendment. It is the one limitation to the First Amendment protection of the Constitution. Let me also remind the school board that they have an obligation to students with disabilities to provide supports and accommodations as needed by these students and to follow the Americans with Disabilities Act, Individuals Disability Education Act, and Section 504 of the Rehab Act. This often involves individualized education plans or 504 plans. Often, these supports are provided in partnership with special school district, and often require the district to provide an assurance statement that these supports, accommodations, needs will be met. Using the R-word is not only inappropriate, but shows a blatant disregard and disrespect to those with disabilities. You see, using the R-word is a slur often hurled at those with disabilities. When I was a student in K-12 education, I was told that sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. This is the biggest lie that has ever been told to me. You see, words do hurt, and they hurt a lot. When I was in school, I was often bullied because of my disability, because of my diagnosis of autism. I was bullied, often in gym class, on the playground, and even in the classroom during group work. Enough to the point that there were some days I thought about not attending classes because of my mistreatment by other students at the time. I often was called fat, ugly, slow, and even on a few occasions, an idiot or the dreaded R-word. Therefore, it is important that we see formal apologies issued and that the board takes any action they can to rectify this hateful language, to ensure that all students with disabilities are treated with the respect and dignity and receive the supports and services that they need. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ben Hobson. Tara Miller.
Hello, my name is Tara Miller. I am a resident of the city of Wildwood and therefore a member of the Rockwood School District. I'm also employed gainfully with the Rockwood School District, and I'm climbing up on 10 years now. And honestly, this is the best job I've had, it's my dream job, and I hope I get to retire from Rockwood eventually. I had prepared remarks, but I'm pretty sure they would have fallen on deaf ears, so I'm just gonna talk about something slightly different. There was a man who was born in Austria, his name was Karl Popper. He was a scientist, philosopher, and he fled Austria in the 20s because, or in the 30s rather, because of the rise of Nazism. And so he knows a little something about intolerance. He came up with this theory called the Paradox of Tolerance, and I'd like to read his words. Unlimited tolerance must lead to the disappearance of tolerance. If we extend unlimited tolerance even to those who are intolerant, if we are not prepared to defend a tolerant society against the onslaught of the intolerant, then the tolerant will be destroyed, and tolerance with them. In this formulation, I do not imply, for instance, that we should always suppress the utterance of intolerant philosophies, as long as we can counter them by rational argument and keep them in check by public opinion. Suppression would certainly be unwise. But we should claim the right to suppress them, if necessary, even by force, for it may easily turn out that they are not prepared to meet us on the level of rational argument, but begin by denouncing all argument. They may forbid their followers to listen to rational argument because it is deceptive and teach them to answer arguments by use of their fists or pistols. We should therefore claim, in the name of tolerance, the right not to tolerate the intolerant. We should claim that any movement preaching intolerance places itself outside the law, and we should consider incitement to intolerance and persecution as criminal, in the same way we should consider incitement to murder, or to kidnapping, or to the revival of the slave trade as criminal, end quote. Now, I'm, got about 10 seconds left, and I just want to say, I'm normally a pretty peaceful and tolerant woman, but last couple of years, well, not anymore.
Next speaker is Rebecca Fly.
Hi, I just have a couple of comments to make. I am a mother of a child in Rockwood with a disability and also the Rockwood SSD Parent Advisory Council representative. So, just two things here, is no matter what the context was or the understanding of the word libtard and the other remarks that were made, there's a reason that a lot of people from different disability communities are here tonight, and there's a reason why this is being talked about in Jeff City and other cities and counties around Missouri, because no matter what the intent was or the context was, that word is just, it's, the damage is done. the damage is done, and there needs to be some consequences here. I believe that the people in the audience who might not understand, and are kind of blowing off the use of this word, I'd like you to imagine a different scenario. Perhaps you have a white male on the Board of Education who uses the most derogatory racial slur you can imagine, and not only uses it once or twice, but continues to use it, and types it out and prints it, and has it on social media. This is what this feels like to the disability community, the worst slur that you can imagine. So if you have trouble understanding why the disability community is here in numbers and why we're upset, it's because no matter what the intention might have been, this has damaged our community. And the last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to ask Dr. Kane and the Board of Education, and Dr. Terry Harris as well, is to take this opportunity to show your support for us, the parents of children in special education in Rockwood, and take this opportunity to finally allow a district parent advisory council for special ed parents, so we have some support from the district, and we can be a community that's strong. Thank you.
Next speaker is Terrica Donnelly.
I have two children in the district. My eldest is in middle school. They are transgender and currently use a wheelchair for a disability. I think a lot of people are focusing on the disability and the things like that, but I just wanted to point out that I would hope, if my child were to make fun or bully a child because of their Christian faith, or their base, or for being Republican, or Democrat, or whatever, that my child would be disciplined, or there would be actions, maybe some reeducation, anything to help them to get along and be more productive in the future, and to obviously not cause harm for other children and people in the district. And so, I at least have not been made aware that that has ever happened with my child. But my child has been bullied, their wheelchair is kicked in the hallway, not, maybe, maybe that is on purpose, it certainly feels like it to them sometimes, but obviously, I know that the hallways in the schools are very crowded for the class changes. And so, you know, those things could be an accident, but definitely, they perceive that as things, things are said. The school has been great when my child usually won't speak up for themselves, but when other children speak up for them, or when they have spoke up for their friends in the LGBTQ plus community, the school has dealt with those things. And so I would hope that as a community, we would also do the same for the other way. So, you know, if, I would hope that it isn't because of, people seem to frame it as, you know, Republican, or Democrat, or things like that, and like I said, my child, I would hope that they would be talked to like that. I'm appreciative for the statement from the board, and I would hope that we could come together. Thanks.
Next speaker is Gary Wiggert.
I'm gonna be kicked out, but these people behind me are truly nasty. Just so everyone knows, I've heard the rumblings all night.
Sir.
They're nasty! Is that me? Me! Okay, now I'm nasty today. So my name is Gary Wiggert, I'm a Rockwood Tech parent. This endeavor here is an attempt to deny Jessica Clark her constitutional right to free speech. I and Jessica were both born and raised in the city of St. Louis, and I know you all must think we are crude, and I am sorry we may offend your elitist but sensitive ears. Yeah, laugh at me, it's fine. I have a solution to this so-called problem, and I think we make Jessica wear a scarlet A, so that way the school board meetings, so that we can alert the women and children to be aware of any possible trigger warnings. I can only assume that Hawthorne is no longer mandatory reading, because he was not politically correct, and that's what this appears to be here, a politically correct meeting. And what we should be about is about education, and that's the last thing on anybody's mind here. I am glad my son went to private school. I would be embarrassed to send him here.
Next speaker is Jody Beltroni.
So, all of y'all are really articulate with your printed-out notes and your three-minute speeches. I am not. I just want to say, Jessica, 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 I watched the video, I watched it nine or 10 times, and I thought, am I hearing this right? Is this a grown woman who is using these types of words in front of people? And she sits on our school board. And I was embarrassed on so many levels, as a Rockwood resident, as a parent, as a woman, and as a Christian. And here, here's the deal. I've learned a very important lesson, and I hope that all teenagers who are watching this today will make note that when you put something out there on social media, it is out there forever. Sugar daddy, sugar baby? I looked at that video probably five or six times with a big sign in the background saying, "Paying for your own stuff is ghetto," and I thought, here is a woman who is selling sex of young women to rich older men, and not that long ago. And I'm watching this video, and I've seen you admit that two years ago, you were a liberal? And I'm thinking, hmm, this doesn't really add up to me. Is somebody making that kind of a switch because they had a come-to-Jesus minute? Or are they making that kind of a switch because this is where the politics, and the money, and the fame, the radio, podcasts, the sponsors? And shame on you, words matter. And I will tell you that I went to two funerals of middle school students last year, and both of them were bullied. And when we normalize this type of speech, this type of, "It's okay to say 'libtard,'" it just means someone who's on the left side of the aisle. What if I made up a new word, "republican-word," and I socialize that everywhere? Would that be okay? It would not. That is a hate word, and I wouldn't do that. And I would suggest that you think very carefully about the words you use. And I'm gonna read something, and I hope I don't get a copyright issue, but when you bring the name of my Lord into your hate speech, it is offensive to me more than anything. And I'll close with this. I urge you, brothers and sisters, to watch out for those who cause divisions and put obstacles in your way that are contrary to the teaching you have learned. Keep away from them, for such people are not serving your Lord Christ, but their own appetites. By smooth talk and flattery, they deceive the minds of naive people.
Next speaker is Kathy Fuchs. Kathy Fuchs. Is Kathy here? Sorry, there's a lot of movement, just making sure we don't skip anybody. No, Kathy, okay. Erin Sulman.
I think I might be one of the last speakers, so I don't know that I need to read everything I was originally gonna say. My name is Erin Sulman. I'm the Executive Director of the Down Syndrome Association of Greater St. Louis. We serve about 2,000 individuals with Down Syndrome in the Greater St. Louis region, many of whom are in this district. I just wanted to start by saying, this is not political for us, it's truly not. I see you parents up there, I do, I see you parents down here. All we're asking is to think about the words that we use. I represent people that have developmental disabilities, I represent their families, and people said, "Don't get political, don't get into politics," and that was really confusing for me. I thought, what about this is political? We just want people to think about their words they're using, and to come to conversations with love, instead of hateful words that discriminate. So I'm here today, I don't need to read my whole speech, because so many people have said what I wanted to say before me. I'm here as a resource, I'm here to help educate families, educators, the district. Thank you for all that you do as educators on the school board, each and every one of you, thanks to every parent in this room. You are all here because you're advocating for your kids, and that is so important. Our organization was founded on parents advocating for their children, and so that is why I'm here. I am a resource. There are amazing organizations in this community that are resources to help us move forward in our educational systems with inclusion, and with love, and acceptance, and belonging. So, thank you so much tonight. Again, this is, this is truly just about bringing us together and learning to use words where we can all feel like we belong. Thank you.
Next speaker is Casey Adams.
Thank you for putting this together, and everybody showing up. First of all, my name's Casey Adams, I'm a 2006 Marquette graduate, so this is home to me, and this all hits home to me. Those that know me here, some of you do, I was born with a disability, and I've lived my life in a wheelchair. This is what I know, this is the school that I know and love, and this is the district that I've known and loved, and this is the reason why my parents moved here back in 1993, is to put me in these schools, and to graduate from this school. The things that have been said, you know, are hurtful, yes, for somebody like myself, who've been bullied at times throughout my life, but, you know what, things like this, you learn to have a thick skin and move forward, and know that you're better for the way that you live. What I will say is thank you to all those that came before me tonight to speak. I don't have to say anything that hasn't already been said. This is, this is something for me that I knew I had to come here tonight to at least show my face, and show this is what success is as somebody with a disability or a differing ability. Again, I'm a Marquette graduate, I'm a Zou graduate, I played wheelchair basketball at the University of Missouri. I'm proud to be a disabled person and live the life that I'm living. I am extremely successful, and it's because of this school and this district. I know it was a long time before, some of you have been here and been on this board, but I'm proud of this district. I know things happen, but I want this district to be what it was, and what it was when I was here. There's a reason why I am still involved with things in this school and in this district, and it's because I love where I grew up, I love the people that educated me. Some of you are here still today, and I'm thankful. And all I want to say is, on top of that, as well as being disabled, again, I'm proud of it, and I teach kids in disability awareness days, and I'm glad schools in Rockwood do that, and more should, because I like to be able to show kids that there are, there are great things for people in chairs like myself, and we're just like everybody else. And that's important for kids at a young age to know, because if they don't have that, and they don't have that in schools, things like tonight happen, and I don't want that to happen going forward. And for me, this is why I do what I do in this district, to be able to go around to different schools and educate kids during ability awareness days, just to be able to show there are good things that come from people with disabilities, and, you know, we are just as productive as anybody else, and we can speak up for things like this when things like this happen. And I am, I'm an advocate for everybody else, and thank you for parents who advocate for their kids and let their kids come here, because that is important for people to, you know, like you all, to see these people here, and see people like myself here. It's important, and thank you.
Next speaker is Abigail Parker.
Thanks so much. Hi, guys, my name is Abby Parker. I'm an alumni of the Rockwood School District. My mother is an educator, and has been an educator in the district for well over 20 years, which is my entire life, and I will someday send my children to Rockwood Schools. I would love to tell you that I am not going to be redundant, but I don't think that there are enough times that the things said today can be reiterated, and I will continue to say them until it is heard. I want to take the opportunity to address the board in light of the comments that were made. And as today's meeting attendance shows, and as everything that has been said today shows, it is unsettling to students, it is unsettling to educators, and it is unsettling to parents, and it is unsettling to me, and I am not a parent, and I am no longer a student, but I am a member of this community, and I am a member of the community, a community that was slandered in speech that is now plastered over not only local, but also national news. I don't want to be critical, I would rather raise a question. Do you, board members, believe that it is fair to hold students and staff to a higher standard than you hold the people who set those standards? The policy that is set in place surrounding discrimination is there for a reason, and it is there for a purpose, and it is to serve the benefit of the entire community. There have been statements both in and outside your role as a board member that are both offensive and unacceptable to not only me, but to multiple members of this community. Not only were these comments made and recorded, but when you were confronted about these comments, you not only refused to take accountability or show any remorse, but doubled down and reiterated your intolerance for minority groups, which includes countless students, staff, and residents of the district. The precedence for this kind of rhetoric may have been set by previous elected officials, but it has no place in Rockwood School Districts. A position on the Board of Education is a responsibility to serve the parents, students, and educators of this district. To continue allowing this kind of hate speech is opening the door for staff and students, and parents alike, as the parents who have been nodding and making fun to my left show, to be hateful. The Rockwood Schools I attended were in no way tolerant of this hateful language and discrimination against marginalized groups, nor should the Rockwood Schools that I someday send my children to. Based on the research I've done surrounding this board member's conduct, her active presence, or lack thereof, in schools, and the district's philosophies and missions for students, I have come to the conclusion that the best course of action moving forward is for her to resign her position immediately. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Thoreau.
Hello, my name is James Thoreau. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a proud parent of a student of the Rockwood, student in the Rockwood School District. I'm here to thank our school librarians and language arts teachers for their teaching information literacy, as well as handling the stress of dealing with the banned books. In today's day and age, being able to find reliable information is important. For example, the Special Library Association recently reported on a study that found teenage recently reported on a study that found teenagers have a hard time discerning between fake and true health messages. Only 48% of participants trusted accurate health messages more than fake ones. In this case, health misinformation and disinformation can be serious public health concerns with an increased spread of fake health news and social media platforms in the last few years. Given this, teaching information literacy is important. Learning how to evaluate and choose trustworthy resources helps students as they seek information about their questions. Librarians and teachers, and teachers have also been navigating the minefield of book banning. According to the American Library Association, over 1,000 books have been banned by school districts in the United States between July 2021 and March 2022. Among the 10 most challenged books, three were by prominent black authors, and five that were challenged specifically because of their LGBTQ content. From a broader perspective, 41% of banned books had main characters of color, 22 directly addressed race and racism, and 33% directly included LGBTQ themes and characters. The book banning issue ultimately comes down to believing one's own individual views are more important or correct than others. Libraries are gateways to knowledge. Some readers prefer not to read books with strong female lead characters, but there are many people who do. And if we limit books in these ways, then we are limiting someone else's expression. These books are needed. They can be lifesaving and affirming, especially for young people who are themselves minorities, gay, queer, or transgender, who are friends, or who have friends who are dealing with issues around race, gender identity, or sexual orientation. The stories of the people in these books are worth telling. If you start banning books, then you start banning culture, and you start banning people. Thanks to our school librarians and the language arts teachers for helping all Rockwood students realize their potential.
Next speaker is Danielle Mirt.
Hello, my name is Danielle Mirt. I use she/her, or they/them pronouns, a resident of the district and parent of a student in the district. And I'm here to speak about why I do not support banning books, because at no time in history have book banners ever been on the right side of history. Admittedly, there is some book content that is uncomfortable to discuss with our children. However, that's our job as parents, to have open, honest, and occasionally uncomfortable topics with our children. Even the Bible has racy content that would currently be banned in Missouri if it were interpreted as a graphic novel. I can quote the Bible without getting in trouble, right? Yeah? Okay. I'll read three interpretations of the Book of Ezekiel, chapter 23, verse 3. First, because I was raised Catholic, I'll start with the King James Bible, which reads as follows. "And they committed whoredoms in Egypt. They committed whoredoms in their youth. There were their breasts pressed, and there bruised the teats of their virginity." My husband, who was, was raised Lutheran, was raised reading the Good News translation, which reads, "When they were young, living in Egypt, they lost the virginity and became prostitutes." The New Living translation reads, "They became prostitutes in Egypt. Even as young girls, they allowed men to fondle their breasts." Now, that seems like an extremely mature topic for students. However, I am not asking for any interpretation of the Bible to be banned, because at no time in history have book banners been on the right side of history. Instead, I would use this, a verse like this, as an opportunity to have a conversation with my child about several things, including anatomy, about consent, and that no one is allowed to touch their body anywhere, whether it's their chest, their genitals, their hair, or even a classmate snapping a bra during class. We need to teach our children to respect others' bodies and what consent looks like, ideally between consenting adults. Now, one of the unfortunate realities for many LGBTQ youth is they are kicked out of their homes by their families, and oftentimes unfortunately turn into prostitution to avoid starving to death. To be clear, I am not disparaging sex workers. I think sex work is work, and it's the oldest prostitution, it's the oldest profession in the world, and Jesus was friends with prostitutes. Nonetheless, it's a dangerous profession. The demographic most at risk are black transgender women, who are frequently the victim of gun violence. And as the parent of a transgender kiddo, the statistics terrify me. During the last election cycle, my kiddo and I had several conversations about sugaring, which was a conversation I wasn't prepared to have. Thanks for that. However, it gave me an opportunity to discuss the many dangers of transactional relationships, including that there are direct links between child sex trafficking and sugaring. I'm gonna say it again, because the truth is the truth is the truth. Sugaring has direct links to child sex trafficking. Thank you.
Final speaker is Julie Stanbrough.
All right. So I am brand new to this whole school board thing. I finally have a kid that's like in real school, you know, like preschool, not, doesn't really count too much, at least my experience. Anyways, so I came here because I'm shocked by what's going on. Like, totally shocked. For one, I'm finally woke, woken up about how messed up this society is. It is no one's right. It is no one's right. But the parents to teach our kids about sexuality, about their male and female parts, must I quote Kindergarten Cop, has changed. Another thing, it is subliminally grooming our children, my children. When you talk about, when you have teachers, all over the internet, first of all, teachers that are discussing their pronouns, that they feel that represent them, their sexuality, like, what's your pronouns, huh? Like, completely unacceptable to talk to our children that way. It's, it's, it's not Christ-like for sure. So if we're gonna quote the Bible, let's be real, people. It's beyond unacceptable. It's pedophilia, for sure. And I'm sorry, but you know, I, to be honest, I did not see Jessica's video or speech or whatever, but I know she has good standards, okay? She's here. You know what? You don't need to, you need to practice what you preach, young lady. Stop it. No, you practice what you preach. Okay, well, then you need to get them in control. Okay. Nope. So anyways, you can leave. So I, you know, and I also am a parent of a child with disabilities. She has, she has, she has, or he has, actually, cerebral palsy. So you know what? I know all about special needs, and I am totally for special needs. And a lot of stuff, let's all admit, I think we can all admit, actually, that a lot of stuff gets taken out of context. Can we not? No, no, I didn't ask you. I'm talking. I'm talking to everybody. I didn't ask you. Anyways, I'm saying as a parent who's a Christian, I don't need anybody telling my kids about their gender, about their man parts, women parts, none of that. It's none of y'all's business to be teaching my kids that stuff. Parents who are quiet right now, you're gonna see them. I promise you. And the fact that gentleman earlier tonight threatened the man, yes, yes, he's in a dress, but he's a man, threatened people with violence because of different views. Unacceptable. And we all heard it. That's, go ahead. It's not gonna change anything. You're a man.
Bam, you're all done. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.